Okay, next item is public comments. Anybody like to speak on the item that will be on the agenda or not on the agenda? Anyone like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. Let's go to approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes of meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
There was two should abstain.
I was gonna say, I did not extend that meeting, I should not approve it? Or can I?
No.
I withdraw my...
Just abstain then.
I should abstain.
I want to abstain. Okay. Excuse me. All right, let's just mark that. Announcements and committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any announcements or committee reports.
Or informational. Okay, now let's go to the public hearing items. First item is Lean Lemon Fitness Staff.
Before you tonight is a special use permit to allow an indoor recreational facility, which would actually be fitness classes and also nutritional coaching. This property is, the proposed business is on a two-acre site, which is located at 96 Glen Karen, which you can see is right here in this building on the map. The main issues that staff identified with this special use permit was parking. And in looking at the uses in the center, staff feels that the shared parking will work because the peak hours for the fitness classes would be at early in the morning or in the evening, which is after the other businesses are in operation. The other issue was if they would be training children or people under the age of 18. And they are committing at this point not to be training anybody under the age of 18, so we are not requiring an evacuation plan for minors. That is something that the fire department does require. And so I've put in the condition that if they do start training 18 and under, then they will have to provide the fire department with an evacuation plan. Being that the intent is that those people wouldn't be able to drive themselves, were adults, if there was an emergency in the industrial area, the adults can drive themselves out of that area. Based on that, staff is recommending approval. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any issues. And the applicant is here tonight.
No many questions this time. Okay, let's open the public hearing. The applicant, would the applicant like to speak?
I don't know, maybe you get this one, give you...
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item?
I have one question for the applicant.
Could you come up, please?
Yeah.
Yes, and can you give your name, please? And where...
Jamie Parker.
Right, and you're representing who?
Lean Lemon.
Okay, thank you.
Will you be working, is it on weekends?
Just Saturdays.
Just Saturdays? And where did you come up with the name Lean?
Lean. Well, like fitness, you're lean. Your muscles are lean.
Well, I was wondering, because that's...
The name of the commissioner here is Lean.
Well, I'm sorry, it wasn't named after you.
No, I love it. Thank you.
What kind of fitness classes are you gonna be doing?
We're gonna do small group fitness classes, so turbo kick, kickboxing, T-Rex, I don't know if you've heard of that, surf set, you know, just those types of classes. Yoga, Zumba.
George?
I have a question for Karen. So, no one under 18, but how do you, if a child goes with their parent, what happens under that condition?
Well, they'd be, the parent would be there to, if there was an emergency. The whole point of the evacuation plan is if there's an emergency, we need to be able to get the children out of there that do not drive, if the parents are not there. So if the child is there with their parent, if there was an emergency, they would be able to get out of there.
So there's no drop off for children or anything like that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. Let's bring it back to the table. Any more items from commissioners? Okay, somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff report for PCN 13007, SP 13003.
Give a second.
Do you want to include the findings on that, George?
I'm sorry. And staff findings. As outlined in Ms. Karen's... I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 13007, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 7, as listed in the staff report.
Second.
All right, got a first and second. Any more comments? Okay, ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Project approved. Good luck with your project.
Art's gonna be your first sign up.
I'm gonna sign up, and with Mr. Lean. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is PCN 13009, Biosafe Systems. Staff? I guess you're still here.
Yeah. Good evening, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This is a special use permit to allow the outdoor storage of hazardous materials on a site at 7.3 acres in the industrial area located at 706 East Glendale. It's this building, and they are proposing to store... This is their existing facility. They are a company that manufactures a product that sterilizes roots and stuff for agricultural purposes. And right now, they have distribution in Sparks, and they would like to add manufacturing, and they would be adding up to 10 jobs. And what they're proposing with the manufacturing is they need to be able to store the chemicals that they use in the manufacturing. They're proposing to store, put four tanks in the back here. Each tank will be 9,500 gallons. There'll be two tanks of hydrogen peroxide and two tanks of acidic acid. The acidic acid is diluted with 20% water. That does increase the flashpoint. I know there's been some questions about the flashpoint on the acidic acid, but that does increase the flashpoint to, I believe, 150 degrees Fahrenheit from 100. Staff is recommending approval. Before the meeting, I handed out, based on the meeting on Tuesday, Commissioner Spurber recommended that we added to conditions three and six, that not only do they have to submit a plan, but the plan needs to be reviewed and approved. So I have amended my conditions based on that suggestion, that the spill plan and the incident plan be reviewed and approved prior to the issuance of any building permit. Based on that, staff's recommending approval, and I conclude my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
You mentioned roots, could you clarify that as tree roots?
The what?
The roots, the cleansing...
Plant roots, yeah.
Karen, is Mike here?
Uh, no, actually, Rob Pizell is here representing him.
Okay, is the chemist from Biosafe here also?
Do you... We want to open up the public, or open... Fine.
It'll come on on the night.
You've got new school on me.
Yeah.
For the record, Rob Pizell, with Rubicon Design Group. Still difficult to say that.
Kind of hard, prompt.
Yeah.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rob, I, on the storage of the tanks, are they gonna be enclosed some which way?
Correct. Yes, they'll be contained within a concrete containment basin, approximately three feet in height. That containment basin is designed to hold all of the, all of the material that'll be contained in the tanks.
For all four tanks?
Correct.
Plus storm water.
Yeah.
Rainwater. It has to include the both.
Correct. It'll also have a sump pump, so that it'll take care of that once the spill does occur, to ensure that the material does not go into the drainage system, the storm drain system.
It was our understanding in our study session that this acidic acid was no more harmful than vinegar, is that true?
A very strong vinegar. That's correct. Looking at the MSDS sheets that came along with the application, it does, if it's ingested, does cause sunburns. Also, if you get it on your skin, it will cause sunburns as well. But nothing out of the ordinary. Again, the remedy for that, if you do ingest it, is not to induce vomiting, but to...
Call for help quick.
Well, no, ingest a lot of water. The idea is to flush it out.
Now, the tanks themselves, are they metal or steel, or what are they?
Steel.
They're steel?
Yeah.
What about the heat from the summer and the expansion of the tanks?
The tanks are double, my understanding is they're double lining, so that addresses that issue.
Okay. One other question here. On your MSDS sheets, it says the acidic acid freezes at 62 degrees Fahrenheit. It gets a lot colder in that here.
Again, I think that's part of the reason why they add the water as well, when they're introducing it into the tank. The idea is to keep it from freezing. But again, the double wall tanks also help with the insulation cold as well.
Okay.
What kind of material, people that are handling it, what kind of precautions do they take when they're, because my understanding is being brought in by a tanker and then hooked up. So what kind of precautionary measures do the people that are doing that, or the people inside, using it when they're around this acid? Again, based on the MSDS sheets, it'd be just making sure they don't, they're not in a closed room with no ventilation. They'll also be using gloves to make sure that they don't get too much on their hands. Again, the concerns are, it does cause some minor burns if you physically touch it. But other than that, no extreme precautions are necessary.
And they would have to comply with OSHA, any OSHA requirements on the handling, and also, you know, that any requirements from the fire and environmental and district health, all of those people.
Yes, if there were concerns with the material, you would have heard that addressed as part of the air quality comments from district health.
What is this used for? I mean, what?
In essence, the manufacturing process, the end result is a cleaner.
And sterilizer.
Correct, a cleaner and a sterilizer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
One question.
I got, Rob, you know a lot, don't you?
It's amazing what you can do when you're properly coached.
I bet.
Rob?
Yeah?
Just curious, chemical fires are treated differently than, you know, building fires, so is there a special fire handling system?
For this, again, the MSDS sheets say to not use water, use a...
Like a powder or something?
Yeah, basically, yeah, a halon system, something like that.
And they would have to post the building, you know, you have seen those signs that have the diamond on there with the different numbers?
Right.
They will have to post that, so the fire department would be aware when they're coming into the facility.
If you did the site reviews, you saw two other facilities in that same development that also have outdoor storage. In essence, it'd be a similar development as those. Containment basins, large tanks, but the hazard warning plaques are located immediately adjacent, so when the emergency services pulls up, they know exactly what they're dealing with.
Okay, thank you. More comments here? Okay, let's open the public hearing. The applicant want to speak some more? Would you like to come up?
Actually, I appreciate that opportunity. Derek Wilson, also with Rubicon Design Group. My only point is, I did a bunch of research on this, and I really am anxious to tell somebody about it, so...
Go ahead.
No, the only issue is, I know that a question about flashpoint came up earlier, and I agree, that word sounds scary, but really, that doesn't mean much. Pure acidic acid by itself has a flashpoint of 104 degrees. A tank of diesel fuel, flashpoint is 100 degrees. So that doesn't mean that's the point where things burst into flames, that just means that's a necessary condition if you wanted to make it burn. So in fact, 104 degrees means most of the time, you can't burn it. You don't, you'd have to put that thing in direct sunlight on a hot day in order for it to have any hope of burning, and then you'd still need oxygen and an ignition source. So we're used to chemicals in that range all the time. And I think what people were envisioning was what's called the auto ignition point. That's where things just burst into flames on their own, and that point is 865 degrees Fahrenheit. So it's almost unattainable in any sort of natural condition. So this isn't something that's unstable in any way.
Good research, Derek, you did good.
I enjoyed that, that was a good...
More questions? I've still got another question for you. One of the things I was concerned, I didn't see on these drawings, any kind of security around, like fencing or anything around these tanks, and I was, could you...
My understanding is the platform takes care of that, so it's designed so you can't back a truck into it.
Yeah, I know that, that's a containment, I know, it's standard containment, one of the half times that you have to have for a spill. But, but you don't feel there's any necessity to put a fence around this area for the public?
Oh, oh, I see.
Yeah, and for, yeah, that's the question I have on.
If it were me wandering around, I wouldn't go tampering with people's tanks with warnings on them, but, but you might, you know, maybe somebody would. If there's, if there's an OSHA requirement for that, certainly we'll do it. I mean, we'll certainly comply with whatever the OSHA and state standards are on that. And I'd say that's a condition that if Sparks thought was necessary, that's something we could, we could agree to, putting up a human barrier fence here.
Right, right, that's it. Okay, any questions from the public? Anybody like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's take it back to the table. Commissioners, any more questions, comments?
Yeah, I do, I do have one. We've got some letters from the neighbors, just concerning also the acidic acid, and one of them listed, said, "What was kind of the emergency action plan if there is a leak or anything that happens on it?" And I think Commissioner Spurber was talking more mainly about it, maybe a terrorist act that could go in and blow this up. And, you know, acidic acid is also corrosive to metal and toxic to aquatic life, according to the MS sheets, and, you know, that's what, half mile from the river? You have some concerns there.
I didn't really mean to put it over Rob, but basically, he was doing great.
Rob can come up too. You could both, you could both be up here if you...
My understanding is that that's handled under OSHA and state requirements about how those requirements...
And the fire department's requiring an incident spill plan, too, that's included in condition six or whatever.
Yeah, that's included as part of the fire department conditions. Again, to reiterate, in case the microphones didn't pick up Karen's statement, OSHA does have specific requirements for evacuation plans and emergency action plans. The fire department compounds on those with regards to, you know, somebody getting in there and vandalizing them. I think the applicant, if the commission feels that that's a necessary condition, I think the applicant would be willing to address that. The concern being, though, you know, now you're inhibiting emergency services if they need to get in there and hose things down. With regard to spills, again, it is a containment basin with a sump pump that is designed to handle the worst-case scenario, in case there is corrosion or a leak or damage and the material flows out. And I think we tried to tick all of those off. Let me know if I missed one, though, please.
Any more comments, questions? Okay.
You were doing such a great job, I thought.
Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Besides that, you're gonna hire an additional 10 employees within two years, that's good for the city of Sparks. I move to forward a recommendation of approval of the special use permit associated with PCN 13009, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 9, as listed in the staff report.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any more comments? Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Projects passed. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, our next item is PCN 13010, Reno Dance Company. Staff?
Thank you, Derek, we're all smarter now. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. Before you tonight is a special use permit request to allow for recreational use within the I Industrial Zoning District. The proposed use is the Reno Dance Company. They're seeking a location for rehearsals. The location is at 994 Glendale Avenue. I'll make Jim work, so I'll throw up the overhead. The property's about 1.5 acres in size. It is comprised of a single multi-tenant building. Reno Dance Company would be proposing to utilize the southern third or so of the building. There, typically in these types of facilities, the concerns are parking. There is, appears to be sufficient parking on the site. There are 28 spaces or so directly adjacent to the unit where Reno Dance Company would be located, and then there's additional spaces located to the north, on the other side of the building. So staff believes that parking in this particular case is adequate. Although there is no proposal to have any kind of special events or anything like that that we may typically see with one of these uses, you'll notice the conditions of approval still have the use that if there are any special events planned, that a temporary use permit is required per the municipal code, but I wouldn't anticipate that being the case here, but should that happen, it's there. The applicant did complete a building code analysis. There are some minor modifications that do need to be made to the space prior to their occupancy, and it's our belief that they can take care of that in short order. Looks like it's pretty, pretty simple stuff. They are also required to provide, as Karen mentioned earlier, the evacuation plan. They'll work with the fire department on that as well. I don't believe that there are a large number of younger children associated with the facility. I think they're mostly adults and even teens, but nonetheless, we still need to have a plan in case there's an emergency, and we need to get folks evacuated out of there. Let's see, there's one more thing I was gonna bring up. Oh, the hours of operation. There are no restrictions on the hours of operation in this particular case. Again, there does appear to be an appropriate amount of parking for the site. Any that they may be deficient could be utilized, they could utilize the non-concurrent joint use of the other spaces. Now, they are proposing to generally operate in the afternoon and evening hours, and then on the weekends as well. But should somebody be there in the middle of the day, I don't think there's, there's an issue with that. So staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions this time? All right, let's open the public ear, the public portion. Applicant, would somebody like to speak? Come on down. Give us your name and who you're with, please.
My name is Kristy Gilkey, and I sit on the Reno Dance Company board.
Okay.
It's been my job to try to get us a secure location. We are nonprofit, and our entire desire is outreach. So we are the company who does the Nutcracker at the Nugget each year. We try to include children from the Boys and Girls Club or other places into that show to give them a real-life opportunity with a real performing group. We also do outreach in Yarrington and Elko and other places, so...
Very nice. All right, again, anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Any more comments? Okay, let's close the public hearing, bring it back to the table. Any other questions?
Tricia, I'd like to make a motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 13010, to allow an indoor recreational facility, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 7, as listed in this staff report.
Second.
All right, any, we have first and second, any more comments? Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Projects approved. Good luck with your project.
Great, thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, obviously, it's one of the items people must be here for. Next item is PCN 13011, Lewis Holmes Investment Company of Nevada. Like, staff?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. This is a request for tentative approval of a plan development handbook for Galleria Station. Galleria Station is about 25-acre residential development located east of Galleria Boulevard, south of the Spanish Springs Town Center, I always want to say Sparks Town Center. Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development, and then also north of the Galleria residential component known as the Preserves. This development was originally intended to be a condominium development that was 270 units in, I want to say, 54 individual buildings. On the overhead, you'll see identified is what's known as, what we're calling Phase Two of the project. In Phase One, you can see several of the buildings have been constructed, and there are still, I believe, nine vacant pads that need to be built out. You can see that the roadway network and the infrastructure is already existing, so it's a matter of coming in, building the buildings, installing the required landscaping for the remainder of Phase One. It is intended with this proposed amendment that Phase One not be altered. The goal and the intent is that at some point in time, the remaining buildings will be constructed, and then there'd be a total of 115 condominium units. Phase Two, as discussed in the staff report, if I remember correctly, there is infrastructure in the ground there. However, the streets are not paved, there's no curb or gutter. Phase Two stalled out, as did the eastern portion of Phase One, when, when the economy went down. And so we've essentially had a vacant piece of property here that I think a lot of people would, would say was an eyesore, people would want to see developed. This proposed amendment would, would allow for 74 single-family residential units to be constructed within that Phase Two area. The intention is to use the existing roadway alignment and then add the residential lots around that existing infrastructure. Again, these are single-family lots, and the, they're also included some of the design standards, the setbacks, et cetera, for, for that development. Staff has been able to make each of the 21 PD findings, which we'll insert into the record at this point, and we are recommending approval of this proposal.
Thank you, Tim. If some comments is signed, let's... Let's, let's open the public hearing. The applicant, Ted?
I remember the old days when I used to have to stand up.
You can sit here.
We got lazy.
We all got older.
Good evening, for the record. I'm Ted Ericson, I'm Vice President of Lewis Operating Corp., representing our, one of our affiliate companies, Lewis Investment Company of Nevada. We purchased Phase Two at the end of last year, and our thoughts there were that, you know, unfortunately, it was not going to be able to be completed, that Phase Two section, with 155 remaining condominiums that were originally planned. So our thoughts were, you know, how can we reposition the property? What can be done to, to get this, this partially constructed property completed? There's a lot of retail next door, retail did not seem like a viable solution. Obviously, you know, the market had spoken on expanding the existing condominium approval. So our thoughts were, single-family detached, it's a real nice location, and trying to leverage off of some of these existing improvements that were already put in. So we, we closed on the property at the end of the year, end of 12th, and during the course of that period, we'd met with the prior developer, we'd met with members of the HOA, and on January 15th, we actually attended an HOA meeting, and our intent of the meeting was to resolve access and actually, you know, just bounce the idea off of people. Hey, what do you think? Is this something you'd like to see? And the folks that were in attendance there, we got very positive feedback. There were some easement matters that needed to be settled. The Phase Two property has easement rights over all of the streets in Phase One, and so the thought there was, hey, you know, maybe we're generally used to seeing these, you know, large developments, and you got Village One through, you know, Village 50. This is a small master plan, if you will, so you kind of think of it as two villages. If you come in and go right, you go to the condominium project. If you come in and you go left, you go to the single-family side. So that was kind of some of the design intent. So we've modified the PUD, or the PD handbook. We've left the Unit One portion alone because those folks, you know, we need to keep that intact, and, and we added standards for the Unit Two section. You know, able to answer any questions you might have, but it's, it's fairly straightforward development application, and we'd like to see it to fruition.
Thank you. Questions, comments at this time?
So looking at that, at the map out there, the development, down at the bottom, the multifamily, the condos there in the red?
Yeah, and the red would be the condominium units.
That's the ones you're going to build?
That's Unit One.
That's what you're going to be building?
No.
If you get approval?
No. It's already there. This area here, this is the existing condominium.
Are they all built out now?
They are nearly built out. There's nine remaining buildings left to be built. This was 115 condominiums under the original approval. Unit Two, as noted here, this was supposed to be Phase Two of the project, and it was originally approved for 155 condominium units. This is what we would build with single-family detached rather than condominium.
Okay.
This stays intact, this is what our application's doing.
So you're still going to build out the condominiums, the nine or seven or whatever you got remaining?
We're not the owner of the condominium project. Galleria Station LLC, the original developer, is still the owner of that, and it's, I can't speak for them.
Okay.
But it's my understanding, at least I can tell you, at the January 15th, 2013 HOA meeting that I attended, one of their, two of the representatives were there that night, and they had mentioned to the folks in attendance that, you know, as the economy healed, their hope was to finish those nine buildings and finish out the Phase One portion of that project.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, like I say, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this subject? Finally, come up. If you give us name and where you live.
Hi, my name's Arnie Johnson. I'm a resident of the Casa Le Condominium Complex. I'm also a new member of their board. My concern is the easement that you were speaking of earlier, because the streets in the new development, in the Phase Two development, are going to be city streets. Galleria is a city street. The primary access for the new development will be the intersection of Costa Azul and Bogan Villa, which is part of the condominium complex. So there will be increased city traffic on that, but the condominium complex will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep for that section of roadway. So I, I've got several concerns, primarily fiscal, because I don't want to see the condominium complex pick up that additional cost for routine maintenance or any liability issues that may occur if someone else has an accident on that particular section of roadway. But I don't know how to address it or whom to address it with.
Can you put up that map again?
So we can.
Right. Yeah, which road are we talking again? Maybe help us a little.
Could you be a point? I think what's, what's in question here is this access right along here. If I get my pen right.
Was that your question?
That's the intersection of.
Yes.
That is. That's the intersection of Costa Azul and Galleria Parkway.
And easement went with the sale of the Phase Two property.
So there's a stoplight at Casa Azul right now, a stoplight that comes.
Onto Galleria?
Yes.
At that intersection, yes.
Yeah, so, and is there a gate that goes into the?
Condo units?
There are gates. They're normally kept open during the day, they're closed at night, but as part of this project, those gates are going to be moved down the street, down Costa Azul a little bit further so that there's access to the new street coming off that intersection.
So you're concerned about the HOA picking up the fee, you know, maintaining that 100 yards?
Correct.
Of condominium.
Right. Maintenance, upkeep, and any additional liability because of accidents or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, do we want to get the applicant back at this point?
We can address it, yeah.
Or should we?
I'm finished.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. Or should we open to more questions? Or anybody else want to comment? Or would you rather comment?
Why don't, why don't you take all of the public hearing? And then any questions can be addressed at that.
Okay. Anybody else from the public would like to speak on this item? Well, hearing now, let's then get back to specific. Ted, can you come back?
If I could just interject. I think it's important to point out that originally, the streets within the entire development were, were private. The, the condominium project, it's gated. The only time you can have gated streets within the City of Sparks is if they're private. And, and so with this proposal, the, the issue is that the, the Unit One project still has gates and private streets, and the intent within the Unit Two is for those to be private streets. So I think that's, or I'm sorry, public streets, which is the, which is, I think, the issue at hand, so.
So in 2005, when this project first started, when nothing was there, not a single condo unit, the Phase Two property was granted an easement across the Phase One property for free unobstructed access. The project got going, the project gets built, the Phase One portion of the project gets built, and then the economy does what it does, and, and when we evaluated this, we said, okay, we, we've got to be able to get to the property. And the way the development patterns have gone, and I don't want to get too wonky, I'll admit it, I'm a civil engineer, although I don't practice anymore. The way that the intersection alignments are and the, and the separation between the intersections, you can't make another street penetration to Galleria other than at Costa Azul, and the only other location can be here at Papaya, and that's spaced off of the next intersection to the northeast. So recognizing those constraints, recognizing that it was the desire of the Unit One residents to remain in a gated community, and also recognizing that the property had a right for free unobstructed access, we said, all right, how can we figure out a solution? The solution, or, well, I don't want to go too fast. We proposed a number of alternatives to HOA board members. We presented alternatives to the HOA membership back in January, and we let them pick. We said, which one, which one do you like? And the overwhelming choice was that the condominium project, A, wanted to stay gated, that was important to them, and we said, that's fine. B, they did not want our future residents going behind those gates, and we did have access rights to do that, but we, we don't want to be back there either. We, we want them to, you know, to enjoy their, their, their community, their village, if you will. So what was derived out of that meeting was an agreement that our company and the HOA signed off on, that's on record, and I brought a copy, that the gates would be relocated to the east so that when one came in off of Galleria at Costa Azul, that wider middle road, a future resident of our, of our development goes that, it's not 100 yards, it's actually about 100 feet, comes in, turns left, and you're done. Papaya to the north will be wide open. It is a right-in, right-out, and again, that's by virtue of setbacks to signalized intersections. And that was the solution derived by, by the Homeowners Association membership, who was in attendance that, that night, and I can tell you, they're very well-attended meetings by their board, and, and we agreed to it as well. So I appreciate the concern. We had the very same, and we went to the board and the membership and said, how do we solve it? To your satisfaction, to our satisfaction, and that agreement that's on record, solved it, so, whoops, excuse me. So that's, that's maybe a long-winded, but I wanted to make sure you had all the information.
Yeah, we didn't know.
Sure. Yeah, would you like?
So you heard a history of that process?
Yes.
Is that a representation that you understand?
Yes, and it's, it's, what I heard was accurate. The only, the only exception I would have would be that the intersection itself was not discussed. The movement of the gates was discussed. That was my first board meeting. My understanding at the time was, at the time of the meeting, that that intersection was, I didn't understand, it was part of the HOA, it was my understanding that it was also part of the sale. And it didn't come out, come to light to me until a few weeks later, that, that intersection wasn't part of the sale, it actually remained within the HOA. And that's when, that's when my concerns became raised. And I'm in favor of the project, I think the project's a great thing. If that's what you've got, you know, if you have to use that section of roadway to get to that project, that's fine. I just don't want the HOA to be responsible for that section of roadway.
And I sit on an HOA board, so I understand concerns about deferred maintenance. I understand. So is that, is that your other board members, or are they?
Well, I'm not speaking for the board.
Okay, so you're speaking, I got, I'm going to be close.
I'm not speaking for the board right now. Speaking as a private.
Were you on the board when that was signed?
Sounds like.
That was my first meeting.
It was, okay.
It was.
Okay. So was that a, a vote put to the board, like a quorum? Okay.
No, the sale wasn't put before the board. The movement of the gates from their present location to the new location was put before the board, and that was agreed to.
So it's this 100 feet of bad road that we're worried about here, potentially?
Well.
The maintenance and the?
The maintenance.
The black toppings?
Maintenance, upkeep, and any liability that may be occurring because of that.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's take it back to the table. Any more comments, questions, guys?
Do you homes? What size of lots are you talking about? Do you remember? Just curiosity.
The lots range in size, but the minimum that a lot is, is approved for, it's a little over 5,000 feet, which is a, you know, fairly standard home site.
Yeah, we get to get that place cleaned up out there.
We, we did, I don't know how many loads of stuff we took out of there, but we took many loads of stuff out of there to get it cleaned up. We also fenced. If you recall, it had this temporary fencing that sits on these concrete blocks and blows over in the wind half the time. We had that removed. We put in what I'll call interim fencing, I mean, it's sound fencing, to, to keep people, you know, out. We want to preserve the value of our asset, but also, you know, just it cleaned things up a lot out there, at least, you know, in the timeframe from when we closed till then.
On the overhead is, is a, is a picture of that intersection, just for your reference.
Okay, another question here. So very specifically in that contract agreement that, between Lewis and those homeowners, is the maintenance of that road is?
That's correct. Yeah, I think.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and I, and I want to be specific, because I think there's, you know, the, the specifics are, the, the HOA maintains it, that's what was agreed to in the, in the, in the amended easement, and we get the right to cross it, that, that section, and it remains unobstructed. And what that means is the gates get moved, and the gates, it's my understanding, are going to be moved in a few weeks.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to, let's stop for a moment, need to have a couple discussions. Be back in a couple minutes. Thank you. Okay, let's get back to the meeting. Any more comments? How about a motion? Anybody want to make a motion here?
I will. Commissioner?
Yes.
I move to forward a recommendation for tentative approval of the amendment to the Galleria Station Plan Handbook, or Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 13011, adopted findings PD 1 through PD 21, and the facts supporting those findings is set forth in the staff report. The tentative approval includes that the applicant shall file for final approval of the plan development within one year of the date of the city council granting tentative approval of the plan development handbook. Due to the nature of the tentative plan development, the planning commission does not recommend that the city council require a bond at the time, as stated in NRS 278A490.
Second? Okay, got a first and second. Any comments? All right, let's call. This thing's been long enough, let's call for the motion. All, all approvals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Project passes? Thank you. Thanks, everybody on that. Okay, our next item, under general business, consideration action on DeAndrea Phase 3. So, staff?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner for the record. This is a general business item pursuant to the tentative map associated with DeAndrea Phase 3. The developer is required to bring forward architectural elevations for review and approval by the planning commission. What you have before you tonight is a product for the lots that have the split grading or the walkout lots, if you will. These products are intended, at least in the near term, to be used within Carrera. Carrera is an approved subdivision, they do have an approved map, there is construction going on right now, they do have the walkout lots, but also in the future, it is a possibility that these same homes would be used in other phases or other villages of DeAndrea that have not yet been mapped, that have the walkout grading. Staff believes that these elevations are consistent with the DeAndrea handbook and also provide continuity between the other elevations that have been approved, and we recommend that you approve these elevations.
Any comments there? Applicant, applicant might speak.
Don't tell them what I made you do.
Don't tell them what I made you do.
I'm Dustin Barker with Lennar Homes.
Nice.
Nice to see you guys. Tim described it really well, we've got some walkout lots that have a split grade to it that we have yet to build on. We're actively building out in the DeAndrea Community Master Plan. We've got two product lines, and this is where the home sites are located, is included in one of the phases that we're currently under construction on. So, what we did is we're getting upon those home sites, and so we're designing new product. And as Tim described, we've kept with the consistency with the same architect and have the same design features of the existing homes that we have out there. So, we're excited to start a new product and see how it goes. We're doing fairly well out there at DeAndrea, so we're excited to do something a little different.
Good. And Ted? Any comments? Questions? Want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the architectural building elevations within Phase 3 of the DeAndrea Plan Development in fulfillment of Condition 22 of the tentative map associated with PCN 03080.
Second?
Second.
All right, any more comments? Okay, call for the thing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Thank you. All right. Here we go to our next, again, public comment. Anything that's not on the agenda? Public like to speak, anyone? Okay, hearing none? Comments from commissioners? Hearing none? German?
Some move.
Second? Let's go.